कथुरड़िया परिसूत नामत्तक महिमा उठावदा
Lord repeat the holy name of the Lord
नेहमिया विन पुस्तकम नांगा मधिकारम 24 वसनते नावासिको
नेहमिया चैप्टर फोर वर्स 20
नेहमिया नांगे 20
नींगल एविडत्ले एकाल सत्तेते केटीरिलो अविडत्ले वंदे यंगलोडे कूड़िंगल नम्मुडे देवन नमकागे युत्तम बन्नुवार इन्रे
कथुरड़िया परिसूत नामत्तक महिमा उठावदा
Lord repeat the holy name of the Lord
निंगल एविडत्ले एकाल सत्तेते केटकरिरलो अविडत्ले वंदे यंगलोडे कूड़िंगल
In what place therefore he hear the sound of the trumpet resort he did the run to us
उलगत्ले पलविदमान सत्तंगल तोणिकरदै नाम पार्कलाम
We can hear many sounds trumpeting everywhere in the world
इन्दिक उलगत्ले पलविदमान सत्तंगल तोणिकरदै
We can hear many sounds in the world
मणिदरुडे सत्तेते केटकलाम
We can hear the sound of man
मिरुगंगुडे सत्तंगले केटकलाम
We can hear the sound of animals
परवैगिलीन सत्तंगले केटकलाम
We can hear the sound of the birds
एद्रिगिलीन सत्तंगले केटकलाम
We can hear the sound of the enemies
एंदरंगिलीन सत्तंगले केटकलाम
We can hear the sound of the machines
कतरै तुदिकर सत्तेते केटकलाम
We can hear the sound of praising God
जबम्बन्नुगर सत्तंगले केटकलाम
We can hear the sound of prayer
इबडिपट्टा पल्ला सत्तंगले, युत्त सत्तंगले निंगल इन्दा भूमीले केटकमुडियम
We can hear the sound of the war on the earth
आना लिंगेवर सत्तम चोलियरिकरदै एकाल सत्तम इन्द्र ओर सत्तम
But here we can hear the sound of the trumpet
पलैया एयरपॉटिले नाम पार्कमुडुदै अंदा कालत्ते मरैपडी जनंगल युत्तंगलुक चेल्लुमुडुदै इंदे एकाल सत्तेई अरुगल तोणिक्या पनिनार्गर
In the old testament according to their customs the people used to sound the trumpet at the time of war
संधोशमा इरिकुमुडुदैंगुड़ै अधै तोणितिरिकरार्गर
Even at the time of joy they had sounded this
इंदे एकाल सत्तंगलिले कुड़ै वित्यासंगल उन्डै इन्द्र नाम भूमीले पुरिन्दुहुल्लमुडियम
We can understand that there is even differences in the sound of trumpets
अंदे एकाल सत्तत्ले वो कुन्जमुन्या वित्यासंगल इरिकरदै अंदे वित्यासंगल अंदे कुरिकपट्टन अभर्गल कण्डुहुल्लुवार्गर
There are differences in trumpets and those particular persons will be able to differentiate it
एकालम बिलंकाद सत्तमिटाल यवन युत्तक आयतमावान इन्रे वेदत्ले ओर वसनम चोलुकरदै
The word of God says that if the trumpet does not sound properly then how will one go to war?
इन्दिकम कावल तोरैले इंदे एकालम ऊढुकर ओर पलक कमाइत्रिकरार्गर
Even today in the military we can hear the sound of the trumpet these days also
अधै बोले रानुवत्तिल्ले इबडिपट्टा पलक कवलकंगल इन्रेकुम इरिकरदै
Even in the military we can find these practices
आना वेदत्ले पुदियर पॉटिले ओर एकालम ऊढकुडिया ओर नाल वरपोकरदै
But in the new testament there is a day going to come when the trumpet will sound
मुदलाम तेसल्लुनिकेरले नांगा मधिकारम 16 वसनत्ले इन्नम कुन्जन नालिले सबै एडुतुकोल्लपडुदर्के एडुतुकोल्लपडुम नैरत्ले ओर एकालम तोणिक्कुम इन्द्र चोलपट्रकरदै
In Thessalonians 4:16 we can see that at the time when the church is being caught up there's the sound of the trumpet will sound
कतरदामे देव एकालत्तोडे वानत्तिले रिन्दे इरंगिवरुवार
The Lord himself shall descend from heaven with a shout
ओवर सत्तत्तुकुम ओवर अर्थमुडै
And there is a meaning for every sounding
ओ एकालम ओर विदमाग सत्तमिटाल जनंगल आयतमावार्गर
If a sound is being trumpeted in the trump then the people will be getting ready for war
अदुत्य एकालत्ले इन्नोर सत्तम गुड़ताल जनंगल युत्तके वंदे निन्ड्रुड़ुवार्गर
If another noise is being sounded in the trumpet then the people will come ready for the war
अदुत्य ओर सत्तंगल एकालत्ले इन्नोर वित्यासमान सत्तम गुड़ताल ओडमिडियागे युत्तले अरुगल कलम्दुड़ुवार्गर
And if another sound of sound is being trumpeted then the people will come and gather together for war
अरम्यानुले नामुकुड़ै इंदे एकाल सत्तेई नाम इन्दनाकले केट्टुवरुकरो
Even these days we have been hearing the sound of the trumpet
सुविशेष सत्तम ओर एकाल सत्तम
The gospel which is resounding is the trumpet sound
उपदेशत्तै केटपदे अधूर एकाल सत्तम
Hearing the doctrine is also a trumpet sound
अदुत्य ओर एकालम तोणिक्या पोकरदै अदिनमय मरुरुपोडिति एसुओडे नमय इनक्या कुडिया ओर सत्तम
Nextly a trumpet is going to sound it is going to transform us and unite us with Jesus
इदैतन पाउल चोलुमुडुदै मुदलाम कुरिन्दियर 15 मधिकारत्ले 52 वसनत्ले एकालम तोणिक्कुम इन्द्र चोलुकरदै
This is what Paul writing to first Corinthians 15 chapter verse 52 he says that the last trump shall sound
मुदलाम कुरिन्दियर 15 मधिकारम 51, 52 इंदे इरण्ड वसनंगलिले एकालम तोणिक्कुमुडुदै नडैबरुकरे ओर मरुरुपतिन वेले नामंगे वासिकलाम
We can see in first Corinthians 15 chapter 51 and 52 that at the sound of the trumpet there is a transformation which takes place
अले ओर वात्ते चोलियरिकरदै कडैईसी एकालम इन्द्र चोलियरिकरदै
In that it was said that it's the last trump
अप्रियानाल अदिकमुन्बाक वेचले एकालंगल ऊढपडुकरदै
If so there are other trumpets which have been blown before it
अदैतन नानुगुलके चुट्टीकाटिनै सुविशेषम अर्विक्यपडुवदे ओर एकालम
That is why I said revealing the gospel is also a trumpet
अदुत्य उपदेशम गुड़त्तु उंगलै आयतपडुत्तुवदे ओर एकालम
Nextly giving you the doctrine and making you ready is a trumpet
अदुत्य इंदे परिसूतवांगुडे आइकेत्ले इनैयिंदे नी कट्टपडुवदे अंदा सत्यतेकेटपदे ओर एकाल सत्तम
Nextly you being built up in the fellowship of the saints and being built up with that doctrines is a trumpet
नाम इप्पोडुदै इदैलाम कदंद वंद्रिकरो
We have been coming across all these things
इनी नाम संदिखपोकरदै केटकपोकरदै कडैईसी एकालम
Hereafter what we are going to meet and hear is the last trump
अंदा कडैईसी एकालम तोणिक्कुमुडुदै नाम एल्लारु मरुरुबमाकपडुवाम
When the last trump shall sound we shall all be transformed
ओर निमिषत्ले ओर यिमैपोडिले नाम एल्लारु मरुरुबमाकपडुवाम
In a moment in a twinkling of an eye we shall all be transformed
एकालम तोणिक्कुम अप्पोडुदै मरितोर अलिविल्लावला एलंद्रपार्गर नामुम मरुरुबमाकपडुवाम इन्रे पाउल अलखाक चोलुकरदै
Oh Saint Paul says for the trumpet shall sound and the ditch shall be raised incorruptible and we shall be changed
प्रिय मणुले नमले एत्तन वेरिन्दे एकाल सत्तेते केटके नमय आयतपडिकोण्डुवरुकरो
Dear beloved how many of us are preparing ourselves to hear this trumpet sound
इंदे मत्त सत्तंगलुकुम इंदा सत्तत्तुकुम ओर परिया वित्यासम इरिकरदै
There is a great difference between the other sounds and this sound
एनंदल सुविशेषम इन्दम एकालम तोडरची आकत्तनितिकोण्डे इरिपदै
Because the trumpet of gospel is being sounded everywhere
उपदेशम इन्रे एकालम सबैकुले मात्रम तोणितिकोण्डे इरिपदै
The doctrine which is the trumpet is sounded in the church alone
सुविशेषम इन्दम एकालम भूमीले कडै मुनै वरै एल्लाह एडंगलिल्लम अंदे एकालम तोणितिकोण्डे इरिकरदै
The trumpet of gospel is resounded in every part of the world
आना उपदेशम इन्दम एकालम ओर वनै उरुवाक्कुडिया अंदे एकालम इन्द्र सबैकुले मात्रमे अदै तोणितिकोण्डे इरिकरदै
But the trumpet of doctrine which is forming a man is being found only in the church
अह इंदे ओर ओर एकालम अंदे सुविशेष एकालम तोणिक्कुमुडुदै नमकुले रचिपु उन्डानदै
When the trumpet of gospel is being resounded we receive salvation
इलाव्टाल नाम इंदा सत्यतिले उन्डाकपडुकरो
Or we have been formed into this church
सबैकुले वंदा बिन्बिन्दे उपदेश स एकालम तोणिक्कुमुडुदै नाम उरुवाकपडुकरो
When we come into the church and the trumpet of doctrine is resounded we have been formed
ओर कुलंदे उन्डावदै ओर ओर पगुदि
A child being formed is another part
अंदा कुलंदे सरियानवत्ले उरुवाकवदे इन्नोर पगुदि
And the child growing up into another part is a different part
अदिकम पिन्बन्दा कुलंदे सरियान नैरत्ले वेलिया वरुवदे अदुत्य पगुदि
And the child now coming out is another part
अधै बोले
Like this
सुविशेषम इन्दम एकालम उन्ने इंदा सबैकुले रचिपुकुले उन्डाकुकरदै
Like this the trumpet of gospel is forming you in this church
उपदेशम इन्द्र अंदे एकालम उन्ने उरुवाकुकरदै
And the gospel of doctrine is changing you
अदुत्य ओर एकालम वरुमुडुदै नी आन्बिल्लयागे वेलिये पोवाय इलाव्टाल इंदा उलगत्ले वुट्टै कदंदे सिंगासनत्तुक पोइचेरुवाय
Nextly a trumpet is going to come and you will be formed as the man-child and go up to the throne
अह इंदे एकालंगले निंगल केट्टु पलकीरिकरिरला
Have you practiced hearing this trumpet sound?
ओवर वारमुम कथुरड़े एकालम तोणितिकोण्डे इरिकरदै
Every week the trumpet is being sounded
अह इंदे उपदेशम इन्दम एकालत्ले उरुवाक्कुडिया सत्य उन्डे
There is a form or there is the work of transformation in the doctrine of this is the trumpet
अना कडैईसी एकालम तोणिक्कुमुडै नन्न नराकुन तेरिन्ना इंदा उलगत्ले वुट्टै नाम मरुरुममाक्क आण्ड अरुडु पोइ शर्न्दुड़ुवाम
But at the last trump what is going to happen is we will be transformed and go with the Lord with him
इदै वरिकन नाम केट्टै अंदे एकालत्तेविडे एसुकृष्ट वरुमुडुदै तोणिकर एकालम वित्यासमानदै
As far as we have heard the trumpet sounds there is the sound which is going to sound at the coming of the Lord Jesus is different
अदि इंदा सरीरत्तै मरुरुपोडुत्तुकरदै इलाव्टाल इंदा सरीरत्तै मिन्टपडै चेकरदै
That is transforming this body or making this body to redemption
अंदा सत्तत्तुकागतान कृष्टो ओलगम कात्रिकरदै
For that sound is the Christian world waiting for
इन्नम सरिया चोलपट्नाल मनवाट्यागम मात्रपट्टरुल कात्रिकरार्गर
If we should properly say that those who are waiting as the bride are waiting for it
इलाव्टाल आवियिन मुदलपलंगले पेट्टरुल कात्रिकरार्गर
Or those who have received the first fruits of the spirit they are waiting for it
इलाव्टाल अभिषेकत्तिन परिबूर्न जीवनै पेट्टरुल कात्रिकरार्गर
Or those who have received the fullness of life in the Holy Spirit are waiting for it
कृष्टुए अरिग्र अरिवुकागे उलगत्तै वेरुत्त अरुलकात्रिकरार्गर
Those who have left hated the world for the sake of knowledge of Christ they are waiting for it
प्रिय मणुले अंदा एकाल सत्तम इन्द्र अंदा कडैईसी एकालम इन्द्र एल्लाहरुकुम केटकुडिया अनुभवम अल्लाह
Dear beloved the last trumpet is not an experience being heard by all
इप्पोडुदै इन्दा कुटत्ले निंगल वंद्रिकरिरगर
Now you have come for this meeting
इंदा कुटत्ले ओर उर सिलरुड़ै कतर पेसिनार
Some of them the Lord had spoken to them in this meeting
कामना देवुडे सत्ततेकेटपदे ओर पगुदि
On a common path where you hearing the word of God is a different angle
सनियान ओर विदत्ले उंगलिल ओर सिलर इन्दिके तोडपट्रप्पेरिरगर
And individually some of you have been touched
उंगलै वोट्टी उकान्द्रिकर आलुके अंदा दरसन गिरछिकरदै
The person who is sitting close by you will not have that vision
अह आना निंगल अदिक पक्कत्ले नान्द्रिकरिरगर उंगलुक अदिक गिरछिकरदै
But you are nearby them and you have not received it
आना उंगल लाइनले उंगल पक्कत्ले इरिकर आलुके ओर तिर्कदरसन वंद्रिको
But the person in your line out close by you have received the prophecy
उंगल पक्कत्ले इरिकर आलुके ओर दरसन गिरैतिरको
The neighbor person have received a vision
इलाव्टाल उंगलुक अदिक अनुभव उंगलिक अदिक गिरैक्याम वंद्रिको
Or you might have received it and others would have not
अप्रियानाल इदैले नन्न लंगी कोडुदरो
If so what do we understand from this
इंदा सबैकुले इरिकुमुडुदै उर सिलरुके दरसन उर सिलरुके दरसन मिलाय उर सिलरुके तिर्कदरसन उर सिलरुके तिर्कदरसन मिलाय अप्रियानाल अंदा देवुडे वार्तै कुरिकपट्टन अभर्गलुके अंदा दरसनम किरैकरदै
Being in this church itself some of them have the vision some not and some of them have the prophecy and some do not have it and some of them alone have this portion of vision
अधै बोले इंदा कडैईसी एकालम इन्द्र एल्लाहरुकुम केटपदा अल्लाह
Even so the last trump is not heard by all
तंगलै उरुवाक्कपट्ट उरुवाक्कुदरुक उपुकुड़त्तुवर्गर
Only those who have yielded themselves to form into God
तन्ने मरुरुपोडुत्त समर्पित वर्गर
Those who have yielded themselves to be transformed
इंदा उलगवाल्के वेंडाम कतरुड़ै पोइ चेरवन्नुमन्द ओर वांजयोड़ै देवीकमागे अर्पणित वर्गर
Those who have yielded themselves with the Godly desire not wanting this world but deciding for God
लाभमाय इरिन्दवेगले नस्टमन्द विट्टुवट्ट वर्गर
All those that were as a prophet to them they have left it at loss
एल्लाहवत्ते काट्किले एसुवै मात्रमे नैसित्त वर्गर
They have loved Jesus more than all
इंदे सिलुवै पट्टी उपदेशत्तै पत्किकोण्ड वर्गर
They have clung on to the gospel of doctrine of Christ
इवर्गलुके इवर्गल एंगे इरिन्दा अलम अरुलका अंदे एकाल सत्तम केटकुम
For them wherever they might be they will hear this trumpet sound
उंगलिल एत्तन वरिकन्द सत्ततेकेटकन्नुमन्द ग्रास इरिकरदै
How many of you have decided to hear this trumpet sound
रचिपिन्य एकाल सत्ततेनान केटरुकरै
I have heard the trumpet of salvation
उपदेशत्तिन एकाल सत्ततेनान केटरुकरै
I have heard the trumpet of doctors
आना एनुडे ओरै वांजय कडैईसी एकालम तोणिक्कुमुडुदै अंदा सत्ततेनान केटकवेंडम
But my only desire is when the last trump shall sound I should hear it
उनकक कुड़मम रुकलाम
You might have your family
पिल्लेगल रुकलाम
You might have children
बिजनेस रुकलाम
You might have business
इंदा उलगत्ले पल्ला तेवेगल रुकलाम
You might have many needs in this world
इदलाल इंदा उलगत्ले वुट्टै नी कदंद बुहुमुडुदै एल्लामे मुडिवुक वंद्रिकरदै
All this will come to an end when you pass down from this world
इवेगलुक मत्तिले एकाल सत्तेकेटकुडिया ओर वाल्कयोड़ै एद्रपार्प्पोडै नी पोइकोण्डे इरिकवेंडम
In the midst of all this you will have to go with an expectation to hear this trumpet sound
ओर वेले नी वायलले इरिकुमुडुदैंदा सत्तम केटकलाम
You might be in the field and you will hear it
इलाव्टाल एंदरम अराख्कुमुडैंदा सत्तम केटकलाम
Or when you are working on the machines you will hear the sound
इलाव्टाल पडुकैले इरिकुमुडुदैंदा सत्तेते केटकलाम
Or when you are in bed you can hear the sound
उन्नोडै वायलले इरिकर ओर आल एडुकपडलाम इलाव्टाल नी एडुकपडलाम अदुत्य आल कईविडपडलाम
Of the two in the field you might be caught up or the other be forsaken
उन्नोडै एंदरम अराख्कुकोण्ड्रिकरे ओर आल एडुतुकोल्लपडलाम इलाव्टाल नी आगे एडुतुकोल्लपडलाम मत्तोन कईविडपडलाम
Of the two who are grinding together one will be caught up you might be you and the other be forsaken
उनुडे कुड़मत्ले विट्ले पडुकैले इरिकर उन्डे मनिवियो उन्डे पुरुषनो उन्डे पिल्लेगलो उनुडे नन्न्बर्गलो उन्डे एलगत्तारो यारो एडुकपडलाम इलाव्टाल नी एडुकपडलाम
Of those who are in bed with you your children, your husband, your wife or any of your family members will they be taken or you will be caught up
इंदा कडैईसी एकालत्तोडे महिमे नन्न तेरिमा अंदा सत्तत्तै यार कादले केटकुडो अवा अप्रिये मारिडु मराइंदुड़ुवान
The gloriousness of this last trump is one who hears this he will be transformed and be taken away without sight
इन्दिक ओर सत्ततेकेटकुमुडुदै उन्ने कोपिट उन्ने तिरुम्बुराय
Now if you are hearing a sound you are turning back
अंदा सत्तत्तुक अवलोदान सत्य उन्डे
That sound has only so much of power
उन्डे पेर चन्नोड़नैयो
When your name is called out
ओर सत्तम वित्यासमान सत्तम केट्टौड़नैयो
Or when you hear a different sound
अह उडने नी तिरुम्बुराय इलाव्टाल अदिकोरे कवनत्ते नी कोडुकराय
You just turn and you give attention to it
इदैला इंदा उलगत्ले नाम केटकरैंदा सत्तंगलुडे सैल्बाड
These are the effects of the sound we hear in this world
अना कडैईसी एकालत्तुनुडे सत्य नन्न तेरिमा
But what is the part of the last trump
अदि यारुके केटकुडो अवन बाक्यवान
Whoever hears this is blessed
यारुक अदिक केटकुडो अवन परिसूतवान
Whoever hears this is a sanctified person
अदि अंदा सरीरत्तै अप्रिय मराइत्वडुकरदै
That body is being transformed as a whole
इंदा सत्यतेकेट्तै
Hearing this voice
इंदे उपदेशत्तै केट्तै
Hearing this doctrine
निंगल कुन्जमुन्यमागे सायल, पेच, नदावडिकेगले मरुरुपते निंगल अडैक्कुकोण्डे वरुकरिरगर
You are transforming or transforming yourself in your walks and talks and actions
अह आना इन्नोर मरुरुमम इरिकरदै
But then is another transformation
इंदा उलगत्ले अदिक बिन्बिन्दे तेन्पडमाटाय
You will not be seen in this world anymore
कानपडामल एडुतुकोल्लपडकुडिया तन्मय इंदे एकाल सत्तत्तुक उन्डे
Without being seen the trumpet will transform you and take you away without being seen
अंदा सत्तम केट्टौड़नै अवन मराइंदुड़ुवान
When he hears this sound he will vanish away
अदै अवनी एडुतुकोल्लकरदै
That means he is being caught up
अदैला अंदा सत्तत्तुनुडे महिमे
That is the gloriousness of this voice
अदि सत्तम केट्टौड़नै अंदा केटकरै नबरुडे कादल तोणिछौड़नै अवन अप्रिये मरुरुमाकी एन्नन्न देवुडे इरिक्कुमुडियागे एडुतुकोल्लपडुकरान
When this sound is resounded in a person's ear he is being transformed and being caught up with the Lord to be with him forever
इंगे नेहमिया विन पुस्तकत्ले अवन चोलुकरान एविडत्ले एकाल सत्तम केटकरदै अविडत्ले निंगल वंदे कूड़िंगल
And here Nehemiah he says whatever place he hear the sound of the trumpet resort he did the run to us
एकाल इन्दा अदर्थलाई अडिक्तो अंदा अदर्थले पोइ चेरनो अदा अंदे एकाल सत्तत्तुनुडे नोकना इन्गाड़ि इन्गे इन्दा अदर्थले रिन्दे नांगल एकाल उदुकरो इंगे वारिंगल अदा अंदा सत्यत्तुनुडे मेनमेन
The main intention of the trumpet being blown is wherever the trumpet is being blown you should be gathered there
आना इंदे एकालम ना कडैईसी एकालम एंगे तोणिक्कुम तेरिमा
But you know where the last trumpet is being sounded
अदैतन मुदलाम तेसल्लुनिके नांग पदिनार्ले नानुगुलके चोलनै
That is what I said in first Thessalonians 4:16
अदि महिमीले इलाव्टाल मत्तिया आगायत्ले अडिक्कुडिया तोणिक्या कुडिया ओर एकालम
It is a sound of the trumpet which is resounded in the midst of the air
कतरदामे आरवारतोडुम प्रदानतूतुनुडे सत्ततोडुम देव एकालत्तोडुम वानत्तिले रिन्दी इरंगिवरुमुडुदै तोणिकर सत्तम
This is the sound that it is resounded for the Lord himself should descend from this heaven with a shout with the voice of the archangel in the trumpet
एकाल सत्तम एविडत्ले केटकरिरलो निंगल अविडत्ले बोइ कुड़वेंडम
Whenever you hear the trumpet sound you should go and resort there
अप्रियानाल इंदा सत्तत्तुनुडे महिमे नन्न भूमीले इरिकर मणिदन अंगे एकालम तोणिकरदै वानत्तिले इंदम मणिदन अंदा अदर्थले बोइ अवरुडु मत्तिया आगायत्ले कोडुकर ओर अनुभवम
Therefore what is the glory of this sound when this trumpet is sounded this earthly man is gathering himself with the Lord in the skies
एनंदल इंदे एकालम वानत्तिले तोणिकरदै
Because this sound is trumpeted in the air
इंदा सत्तत्तुक सोन्दकारण अवन भूमीले एंदा पगुदिले इरिन्दा अलम ओर वेले मन्नुकुले मराइंदे सेत्तै अवन अलिकी पोइरिन्दा अलम कृष्टुकुल मरित अरुलके मुदलावदे उयरोड़ल अंदा सत्ता अंदा सेत्तै किरण्दे अलिकी पोन सरीरत्तुकुल चीवनाई पाइंदे अवनैयुम एलिप्पीकोण्डसल्लम
Those who are hearing this voice even if he is dead and if even is gone to the mud like that he will be grizzened up and he will be resurrected when he hear this voice
अना तान कृष्टुकुल मरित कर मरित अरुलके मुदलावदे गलंद्रपार्गर इन्द्र चोलपट्रकरदै
That is why it is said that the dead in Christ shall rise first
इदैतन पाउल चोलुमुडुदै ओर निमिषत्ले ओर यिमैपोडिले रिन्दे रिन्डू कुटत्तै चोलुकरदै
That is what Saint Paul says that in a moment and in a twinkling of an eye
कथुरड़िया परिसूत नामत्तक महिमा उठावदा
Lord repeat the holy name of the Lord
इंदे अदर्थले अवर चोलुमुडुदै इंदे एकाल सत्तत्तै एंगे केटकरिरलो अंगे वंदु कूड़िंगल
Here he says wherever you hear the sound of the trumpet you resort together
नमुडे देवन नमकागे युत्तमनुवार
Our God will fight for us
महिमीले ओर मणिदन मरुरुपोडुदै इन्द्र ओर परिया युत्त कलम
The man being transformed in the glory is a war field
कृष्टुकागे निर्पद इन्द्र ओर युत्त वाल्कय
Standing for Christ is a battlefield
इंदा उपदेशत्तल निर्करदै निरदु ओर नाल ओर युत्त कलम बल
Standing for the doctrine is every day a warring affair
एनंदल पाडुगल मत्तिले पोखवेंडम
Because you should go in the midst of sufferings
सिलुवैयो सुमंदु पोखवेंडम
You should carry the cross and go
विश्वास परिचेविले निर्कवेंडम
You should stand firm in the battle of faith
पन्नीन प्रदेश्चेले उन्मय आयुकवेंडम
You should be true in the consecration that you make
कृष्टुविन अन्भय विट्टै पिरिया कुडादै
You should not depart from the love of Christ
आण्ड अरु कुड़त्त उपदेशंगले विट्टै वेलकुडादै
You should not depart from the doctrines which the Lord has given you
नीदियागे नैरमयागे नराक्कवेंडम
You should walk uprightly and justly
नीदिमांगलाई जीविकेवेंडम
You should live as righteous
इंदा उलगत्ले एंद अदि इंदा सूनलिलो नाम अडिमीपट्टु पोइविड़ा कुडाद
Whatever situations it might be you should not be a bondage to it
एसुविन वर्गीले पोनुना पत्तुकास्क कदंद इरिक्कुडाद
If you should go in the coming of the Lord you should not be in debt even for ten pence
एसुविन वर्गीले पोनुना ओर रुआ कुडनी वट्टी वाइंगिर्कुडाद
You should not get anything for Ashar Reev even for one rupee
इंदा उलगत्ले वुट्टै कदंद बोधु उलगत्तिन कट्टुगल उनकु उन्द्रुकुड़ै इरिक्कुडाद
When you go away from this world the bonds of this world should not be found in you
प्रिय मणुले रम्ब गवनमागे इरिक्कवेंडियो ओर कालम
Dear beloved it's a time when you should be very careful
निंगल एकाल सत्तत्रे एविडत्ले केटकरिरलो अंदा अदर्थले वंदु कूड़िंगल
In what place you hear the sound of the trumpet you resort together
एकाल सत्ततेकेटकुन्ना नान्ने के येलु कारिंगले उंगलुकमुन्बाक वेखरै
If you should hear the sound of the trumpet I place before you seven things today
नेहमिया विले नाला मधिकारत्ले 21 ले रिन्दे 23 वरै पार्ताल येलु कारिंगल चोलपट्रकरदै
In Nehemiah chapter four verses 21 to 23 there are seven things told here
अह ओर एकाल सत्ततेकेटके अवन एप्पुडुम आयतमागे इरिकवेंडम
To hear the sound of the trumpet one should be always ready
इंदा वार्ते चोलिविट्टे अवर चोलुकरदै नांगल इप्पुडी इप्पुडी कात्र रुन्दाम
Saying so he is telling that we have been waiting like this
इप्पुडिये नांगल वेले सिद्धुकोण्डरुन्दाम
Like this we have been working
एकाल सत्तत्तकेकुडन् आसैपट्टम कतरुड़िया वेले चेय्य कुडियामनागम मुदलावदे तन्नै अमित्तुकोल्लवेंडिदे अवश्यम
Those who decide to hear the sound of the trumpet should prepare themselves for the work of the Lord
उलगत्ले नान पल्ला इंदा कारिंगले चोलुमुडुदै निंगल गवनिंगल
When I tell you these things you should hear
एकाल सत्तत्तकेकुडन् मरुरुबमागनो कडैईसी एकाल सत्ततेकेट्टै अवरुडु पोइ चेरनुन्न चन्ना मुदलावदे नी कतरुड़िया वेले चेय्य कुडियामनाई मारवेंडम
If you should hear the trumpet of the Lord and if you should hear the last trump and going is coming then you should join the work of the Lord
कथुरड़िया वेले इन्दु सोलुमुडुदै नेहमिया आरु मूंदिले पार्कमुडुदै अदै ओर परिया वेले
When you see Nehemiah 6:3 it is a great work
अदि देवुडे वेले अदि परिया वेले
The work of the Lord is a great work
उनुडे इंदा उलगवेलेगले काट्टिलम अदि कथुरड़िया वेले अन्नोडिनाल अदि मुखियमाय परिया वेले आगे देवनाल वर्णिक्यपडुकरदै
More than all your works the work of the Lord is great and therefore it's a great work of the Lord
नेहमिया नालु पत्तुन्दुले पार्कमुडुदै अंदा वेले विस्तारमान वेले
When we see in Nehemiah 4:19 we see that the work is great and large
कतरुकागे नी एदियावदु सेदरुकराया
Have you done anything for the Lord?
आण्ड अरुडी वेले नी सेदरुकराया
Have you done the work of the Lord?
इंदा उलगत्ले एबलो ओ कस्टरपट्टु निंगल वेले सेदरिंग
You are laboring hard in this world
यात्राहम मुदलाम मधिकारम 11 वसनत्ले अवर्गल सुमै सुमक्र वेले सेदार्गर
Exodus 1:11 we see that they were carrying burdens
उलगत्तिन वेलेगल इन्द्र ओंगलै भारतलाल अल्टुकुडिया कारिंगल
The work of the world is always putting you and afflicting you
लुक अवर इलन्ने सुविशेषत्त्रे नाम पार्कमुडुदै
When we read in Luke's Gospel
एसुकृष्ट ओर विट्टुके पोइरिन्दार
Jesus Christ went to a house
पत्तामधिकारन 4 वसनत्ले पल्ला वेलेगले चेदा अंदा पेन वरुथमडैन्दाल इन्रे नाम पार्करो
Chapter 10 verse 40 we see that she who watched and worked a lot she was full of weariness
इंदिक उलगवेले इन्द्र ओन्ने अल्टुकुडिया वेलेगर
Today the work of this world is burdening you
इंदा उलगवेले इन्द्र ओन्नक कवलयी वरुथत्तुन्गुड़कुडिया वेलेगर
The work of the Lord is making you to be full of care and worry
इंदा उलगवेले ले उनके एलैप्पार्डल किरैयाद
You have no rest in this worldly work
इंदा उलगवेले उन्ने अल्टुत्तुम रिन्डावदे वरुथत्तिल उन्ने कोण्डु पोइसेरुको
The worldly work will only put you into burdens and can put on into worry
अना अदि चेयामल इरिक्कुमुडियाद
But you cannot be without doing it
अदि चेदा नान चापड़मुडियम
Only after you do this work you can eat
आना इवेगलुक मत्तिले नी कतरुड़िया वेलयुम नी चेय्यवेंडम
But in the midst of these works you should do the work of the Lord
यात्राहम 36:1 पार्कमुडुदै
Exodus 36:1 when we read
परिसूत सलत्तिन वेले उनकुले नरंदुकोण्डे इरिकवेंडम
You should have the service of the sanctuary in your life
एन्रकी इंदा मार्कत्ले नी कहिले वेदत्ते तूकिनायो अंड्रिले रिन्दु उनुडे एलके परिसूतम इन्द्र नी मरंदुड़कुडाद
On the day that you have taken the word of God in your hands you should not forget that your work is holiness
परिसूत सलत्तुक परिसूत सलत्तु तिरुप्पनिगलुक अदुत्य सगले वेलेगलयुम कतर कत्पितपडी नी चेय्यवेंडम
You should do the work of the service of the sanctuary in the manner that the Lord has commanded you to do
उलगत्ले तोलिले इरिकलाम
You might have a business in the world
उंगलक एदादु प्रोफेशनल ओनुडे वेले इरिकलाम
You might have a professional work
आना इवेगलुक मत्तिले परिसूत सलत्तुनुडे वेले नी नन्न सेयकराय
But in the midst of all this what is your work of the service of sanctuary
परिसूतम इन्द्र ओनुडे अचीवियत्तल ओर अंगम
Sanctification is a part of your life
उनुडे पेचिल परिसूतम तेव
You need the sanctification in your work
उन वाल्विन ओर अम्संगलिल्लम परिसूतम तेव
You need the sanctification in every aspect of your life
एनंदल नाम दे आराधिकर देवन परिसूतत्तिल वायराक्यमुल्लवर परिसूतत्तले पच्चीकर अक्नी आगे इरिकरार
Because the Lord whom we worship is zealous and holiness and he is consuming fire and holiness
अवर परिसूतत्तिल पूर्णर
He is perfect in holiness
महापरिसूतमान देवन
He is the most holy God
अवरी दरिसिके नमकुम परिसूतम तेव
That we might see him we need that holiness
अना ल परिसूत सलत्तुनुडे तिरुप्पनिगलुक कडुत्त वेले परिसूतत्तुकुरितुदाने ओर वेले उनकुले नी नरापितिकोण्डे इरिकवेंडम
Before the service of the sanctuary or the work of holiness should take part in your life
कथुरड़िया परिसूत नामत्तक महिमा उठावदा
Lord repeat the holy name of the Lord
यात्राहम 39 मधिकारत्ले 32 वसनत्ते पार्कमुडुदै
Exodus 39:32
अदुत्य आशरिपु कोडारत्तिन वेले इन्द्र चोलियरिकरदै
Nextly we see that it's the work of the sanctuary
उनुडे सरीरम देवुडे आलयम इलाव्टाल देवुडे कूडारम
Your body is the temple of God
अदि देवीकमागे नी कट्टी एलुप्पवेंडिदे अवश्यम
That you should build godly way
इंदा उलगत्ले कथुरड़े वेले नी एदादु सेयकराया
Are you doing any work of the Lord in this world?
अवर ओर वेले सेदि अदि विट्टुवट्टु पोइरिकरदै
He has done a work and he has left it back
नाम अदि चेयोम इन्द्र नम्बिकेल दान नम्मुडे करत्ले अदि कोडुत्तु विट्टु पोइरिकरदै
With the hope that we will accomplish it he has given it to our hands
अंदा ऊलियते नाम चेय्यवेंडम
We should do that work
अदि देवुडे तिट्टम
That is the plan of God
कोलोसियर 1:24 कृष्टुविन पाडुगलील कुरैवानदे इनुडे मामस सरीरत्तिले नान नेरेवेट्टुकरै इन्द्र पाउल चोलुकरदै
Saint Paul says that which was lacking in the sufferings of Christ I fulfill it in my body of flesh
अंद्रक अवर पट्टनंगल दोरुन ग्रामंगल दोरुन नन्मय सेयकर अवराग सुट्टी तेरिन्दार
He walked about through villages and places and cities doing good
निंग 24 नरम उन्गलुकागवे क्रिय सेदुवट्टे देवुनकागो उन्द्रुम चेयामल नित्यते निंगल एप्पुडिया कलिपि एंगे पोइ कलिपिरगर
24 Razi you are working for yourself and not working for the Lord in eternity where will you go and spend
कालील एल्लमुडले रिन्दे नाइटले तून्गपोर वरेको उंगलकागो तान निंगल कचैल्पट्टुटे एयरकिंग
From the morning even until night you are working only for yourself
इन्न चोलपट्नाल
Even if you should add more
वारत्ले ओर मूनमुणि नैरम गुड़ै उनके सर्विसले कंटिन्यूवान्दो उकारमुडियल
Even for three hours in a week you are not able to sit continuously in the service
अदि मूनमुणर्न नान्दा सर्विस टाइम
It's only three hours in the service time
इंदा टायत गुड़ै उन्गलुक इदले स्पेंड बनामुडिल इदले गुड़ै पादिये निंगल त्रिडिरिंग
You are not even able to spend half of it you are stealing it
इंदा उलगवाल्के 70 वर्षम बलत्तिन मिग्दिनाल 80 वर्षम
The worldly affairs for seventy years and if in the midst of the strength you increase for eighty years
इदैकु वरगुल्ल नित्य कालम इलाव्टाल युगायुगमाय इरिक्कपोकर वाल्कीले देवुनोडै इरिक्कुन्ना इंदा उलगत्ले वारत्ले ओर मूनर्नर रिन्डू मूनर्नर कतरोड़ैंदा सर्विसलान्दु डुपोना पल्लावुल्ल पोइ चैंद्रमुडियम
If you want to be eternally with God forever and ever can you be with him if you come only for one or two hours for the service every week
रम्ब सिंधिकेवेंडियो ओर कालम इद
You have to think about this
निंग इदैकु कनकु चोलिये आगवेंडम
You have to give an account for this
अह इदैपोगन नी कतरुकागे नन्न सेदरुकराय
What have you done for the Lord?
एदादु वेले सेदरुकराय
Have you done any work?
एदादु पाडुपट्टुकराय
Have you suffered anything?
एदादु ट्रैक्ट कुडुत्तुकराय
Have you given any chance?
एदादु एसुरुपति चोलियरिकराय
Have you said about Jesus?
ओर साच्चि चोलियरिकराय
Have you testified?
एंगे आदु अलैन्द दिरिन्द कतरुडे सेवये एदादु उरुपत्तिल सेदरुकराय
Have you wronged about anybody during the service of the Lord?
वेलयाल कुलयाल अवन सम्बलत्तके अवन पोरुपाके इरिकरान
One who is working for wages he is worthy of that wages
अब्रिदान ओर तावेले सेन्जन निच्या उनकु कुलि किरैक्य
One who is laboring will surely receive his wages
अह वेलयाल कुलि की पात्र
One the laborer is worthy of
नी कतरुकागे एदादु सेदा उनकु कुलि किरैक्य
If you do anything for the Lord you will receive your wages
नी ओन्नुमेच चेयाम एप्पुडि कुलि किरैक्य
If you do not do anything how will you receive wages?
इंदा उलगत्तिन वेलेगले निंग रम्ब इंटरेस्ट चेदि रम्ब उंगल बिसास बिजी आमा ट्यूट
You are more interested in the worldly work and Satanist made you more busy
आना आवियानोडै करंगले निंगल उपुकुडुत्तु कतरुकागे नन्न वेले सेयकरो
But you yielding yourself into the spirit of the Lord and what work are you doing?
ओर सिलर कतरुड़ि वेले असदियाच्येदार
Some of them are slack in doing the work of the Lord
तंगलुडे कारिंगले गुड़ै ओर सिलर असदियाच्येदार चेदा
Their own works they are doing it slackfully
रिन्डू वसन उन्डे तन वेले असदियाच्येदार वन कतरुड़ि वेले असदियाच्येदार वन
He who is lackful in his own work is also slothful in the Lord's business
तन वेले असदियाच्येदार वन अलिबुनुके सगोदरन
He who is slothful in this business is a friend of
कतरुड़ि वेले असदियाच्येदार वन सभिक्यपट्टम
One who is doing the work of the Lord slothfully he is cursed
अबत देवुडे वेले नी असदियाइलाम जाकरदया चेनो उनुडे वेले नी जाकरदया चेनो
You should be careful in the work of the Lord and also in your own work
नीदिमलुकल 22, 21 वसनत्ले पार्कमुडुदै
Reading in Proverbs 22:29
तन वेले जाकरदया इरिकर मंशन अना अवन राजाकलुकमुन्बाक पोइ निर्पान
He who is very permanent in his work shall stand before the kings
कतरुकमुन्नाले राजादी राजाहुकमुन्बाक नी पोइ निर्कवेंडम अनाल
If you have to go stand before the Lord of lords
नी उन वेले जाकरदया इरिकवेंडम
You should be careful in your business
नी जाकरदया इरिन्दाल नी नीसरुकमुन्बाक निर्कामल राजाकलुकमुन्बाक निर्पाय
If you are diligent you should not stand before mean men but before kings
कथुरड़िया परिसूत नामत्तके महिमा उठावदा
Lord repeat the holy name of the Lord
मुदलावदे अनि पुडिये नांगल वेले सिद्धुकोण्डरुन्दाम
Firstly we were working like this
मुदलावदे ओर देवुडे पिल्ले कतरुड़ि वेले चेय्यवेंडम
Firstly a child of God should do the work of the Lord
चीवियते ऊलियते कट्टी एलुप्पवेंडम
He should build his life in ministry
परिसूत सलत्तुकुरितु ओर अरिवु इरिक्कवेंडम
You should have a knowledge concerning the sanctuary
ऊलियते कुरित्तु सबैया कुरित्तु ओर कवलय एप्पुडुम उनके इरिन्दुकोण्डे इरिकवेंडम
You should have a care concerning the ministry and the church
उलगत्ले उंगलुक वेलेगल रुकलाम अदि उनुडे पिलैपुकागे कोडुकपट्टदे अना नित्यत्तिले नी पिलैक्कुमुडियागे कतरुकागे नी वेले सेय्यवेंडम
You might have many works in this world but that is for your earning but you have to do your work in eternity that is the work of the Lord
अंगे अदुत्य चोलपट्रप्पदे नन्न
What is nextly said?
नांगल किलक्कु विलुक्कुम नैरमुडल नच्चत्रंगले कानमुट्टुम ईटीगले पिटित्रुन्दाम
We have been holding our spears from the rising of the morning till the stars appear
ओर देवुडे पिल्ले इन्दु सोलुकरवन एप्पुडुम पट्टायमुल्लवनाय इरिकवेंडम
A child of God should always have the sword in his hand
आवीन पट्टायम नमकु तेव
He should have the sword of the spirit
अह उनुडे विडुगले इंदा आवीन पट्टायम एल्लार कहिलम इरिकवेंडम
All of you should have the sword of the spirit in the houses in your hands
उलगत्ले चोलवांग कतरुड़ि वसनम इन्दम पट्टायन अदि बाइबुल निंग कनकलक्लाम विट्ला वाइंग्य वच्चिरिरि
The world they say that the sword this is the word of God you have plenty in your house
आना पुदियर पॉटले देवुडे आवीन पट्टायते निंगल एप्पुडुम वाइत्रिकवेंडम
But in the new testament you should hold on to the sword of the word
इंदा पट्टायतले ईटी इन्द्र वित्यासमानदै
The sword is different from the spear
इंदा ईटीकी नाम गवनमाय इरिकवेंडम ईटी नम्मुडे करत्ले रुम इरिकवेंडम
This spear should be very careful while This spear should be very careful while we are holding it and should be in our hands.
Anga parunga, avarulil, badi, pair, eeti galai, pidithirundarkal.
We can see that half of them held their spears.
Oru devanudepilla, endu solukravan, epurudhum, kathramde, kaila, oru pattayathay, vaitirukkavendam.
A child of God should always have an arm in his hand.
Ebesiar, aaramadigarathe, parukumbadhu.
When we read in Ephesians 6 chapter.
Ange, powul, enna cholukkara.
There Saint Paul says.
16 vasanathle.
6:16, when we read.
Devavasanamagaya, aviin pattayathay, eduthukolungal.
You should hold on to the sword, which is the word of God.
Vasanam, oru pattayam, parishutthaviyanavar, adinmulaamaga, tanndevallame, velipaduthukkara.
Word of God is a sword and through that, the spirit of God is working in it.
Sarpatha, epri merkolluvade.
How can we overcome serpents?
Devanude, vasanathinalam, attukuttiinudharathinalam, saachin, vasanathinalam, avanai, naam jayikalam.
By the word of God and the word of testimony, we can overcome him.
Ingay, eeti galai, pidithirundarkal.
Sure, they were holding on to spears.
Indha eeti, nuudiyae, tanmaila, oru, periyavithyasam, irukkathade.
Here there is a difference, different aspect in the spear.
Oru devanudepilla, epurudumai, avan, tanndiyekaila, eeti, pidithirundhal, avandiyutham, jayamai, marukkathade.
A child of God, whenever he holds on to the spear, then his war is becoming victory.
Pattayam, vare, eeti, vare.
A spear is different from sword.
Ah, epurudhum, unadaiyekaila, oru eeti, irukkavendam.
You should always have a spear in your hand.
Indha eeti, yosuavin, kaila, kaanapattada.
This spear was found in the hand of Joshua.
Ah, ande, eeti, avan, kailirundabodhu.
When he had this spear in his hand.
Avan, oru pattanathu, jayke, adu, oru, vaipaga, irundade.
It was helpful for him to overcome a city.
Yosuva, 8 vasanathle.
In Joshua chapter 8.
18 vasanathle, parukumbadhu.
Was 18.
Ande, aai, pattanathukurudamaga, avan, tanndkaila, irukkara, eeti, niiti naan.
He stretched out the spear towards the hand, toward eye.
Idu, suyamai, avan, cheyivellai, kathr, solli, ande, eeti, niiti naan.
He did not do it of his own accord, but he spread out his hand with the spear on the command of the Lord.
Moses, tanndekaila, oru, koolai, vaitirundan.
Moses had a rod in his hand.
Anda koolai, avan, niiti, avan, kandakaila, piditho, veyathirukkumadhu, tanndkaila, veyandurukkumadhu, andha, janangal, jayitarkal.
When he held out that rod in his hand, then the people got victory over the battle.
Avandekai, taandabodhu.
When his hand was brought down.
Israeljanangal, pinvanganakal.
The children of Israel, they were, they backslided.
Andraki, yuthathle, yosuva, dhan, nindukundran.
In that day, in that battle, Joshua was standing.
Avan, angirundu, papa, mose, papa, yuthathle, yeh, jananga, pinvanganran, patthu, unna, avan, thirimbi, papa, mose, and kai, taandurukum.
He saw Moses, why the people were not prevailing, they were backsliding, he saw that Moses' hand was let down.
Ah, idu, avan, patthukundeyirundan.
He saw that, like that.
Kaila, veyathinal, jayam, kaila, taandhal, tolvi.
If your hands are raised up, you have victory, if your hands are let down, there is defeat.
Epurudhu, mose, kadayadhe.
Now Moses is not there.
Ipo, mose, in sthanathle, yosuva, vendupitan.
In the state of Moses comes Joshua.
Adheepola, oru yuthakalam.
Like this, a battlefield.
Ipo, kathr, chonnadu, unkaila, irukkara, eeti, andha, pattanathukunna, era, niittu.
Now the Lord says, "Stretch out the spear towards that city."
Yosuva, tanndkaila, irundhe, eeti, pattanathukunna, era, niiti naan.
Joshua stretched out the spear in his hand towards the city.
Niittnan, chunnad, chuma, oru, nishan, niittala.
He did not hold just for a moment.
Niittan, eblavunneran, thirima?
Do you know how long he held out?
Jayam, kadaykara, varigam, avan, thaaya, tanndkaila, kila, veyipodala.
Till they obtained victory, he did not put his hand down.
Ningay, eblavunneran, kaila, vaiti, thotramanuiga.
How long do you lift up your hands and praise God?
8 munneran, oru, mission, velasiyiviga, anana, 8 nishan, ungalala, kaila, vaiti, nikumudiyadhe.
You will work on a mission for eight hours, but for eight minutes, you cannot lift up your hands.
Ananal, yuthakalam, muluvadhum, yutham, jayikku, varai, avan, kai, tanndkaila, madakkave, illai.
But in the whole of the battlefield, until they got victory, he did not fold his hands.
Yosuva, 8 vasanathle, 26 vasanathle, parukumbadhu.
Joshua 8:26, when we read.
Aai, inkudiyalalam, sangarithu, thirumattum, yosuva, eeti, niitti, kontrindha, tanndkaila, madakkavillai.
Joshua drew not his hand back whether, where with he stretched out the spear, until he had utterly destroyed all the inhabitants of air.
Andha, janangal, eeti, pidithukundrundarkal.
The people were holding on to the spear.
Jayam, kadaykvarai, nee, devanudeyashamukuthu, vettu, velakavay, kudada.
Until you receive victory, you should not depart from the presence of God.
Unkaila, epurudhum, oru, eeti, irukkavendam.
There should always be a spear in your hand.
Eduvarika, ande, eeti, avanukal, pidithirundarkal, thirima?
Do you know how long they held out the spears?
Nachathrungalai, kaanumuttum, aurukal, pidithirundarkal.
Until they saw the stars they were holding on.
Indha nachathram, yesu, vaykaanbikkathade.
This star shows Jesus.
Yesu, perakkumadhu, oru, nachathram, endu, alakepattar.
When Jesus was born, he was called by a star.
Yakovilirundu, oru, nachathram, udikum.
There will be a star coming out of Jacob.
Ah, adhikaalain, avar, makanaga, vidiviliyaga, oru, galathil, udithar.
He will rise as the morning star.
Ananal, adheen, arathle, innoru, nachathramai, varaapookkara.
He will come back as another star.
Avar, dhan, sabayinudiyae, vidiviliyaga, erukkara.
That is the morning star for the church.
Ah, panna, parishuttavangal, nachathrungalai, kaanapattukkara.
The saints of God have found the stars.
Indha ekkaalam, tonikvarai, nachathram, oru, varai, kam, nee, unadaiyekaila, eeti, pidithirukkavendam.
Until the trumpet sounds, until the stars appear, you should hold on to the spears in your hand.
Kathr, jayam kodukkara, varigam, unadaiyvalkele, nee, poradikundeyirukkavendam.
Until the Lord gives you victory, you keep on striving in your life.
Viswasaathle, jayikku, varai.
Until you get victory in your faith.
Parishuttathil, jayikku, varai.
Until you have victory in the holiness.
Pradhisail, jayikku, varai.
Until you have victory in your consecration.
Kristvin, anbilli, jayikku, varai.
Until you have victory in the love of Christ.
Unmai, valkeel, jayikku, varai.
Until you have victory in the truthfulness.
Ovundru, oru, subjecte.
Everything is a different subject.
Ovundru, nijja, passkanaavendam.
You should pass on everything.
Aduvarikam, unkaila, devavasanamagaya, aviin pattayam, irukkavendam.
Until then, you should have the word of God, which is the spear in your hand.
Vipakachollaponal, eeti, irukkavendam.
Particularly, you should have the spear of God.
Andha, eeti, dhan, unne, sarayana, vudhathle, padukakkudiyade.
That spear is able to preserve you properly.
Ah, andraki, irundhe, ellarame, tanndkaila, epurudhu, oru, eeti, vachirupan.
In those days, all the people held on to the spears.
Sawle, ninga, pathing, chunnay, anytime, eeti, kaila, irukkum.
If you see Saul, he will have spear in his hand always.
Ah, avan, javelin, throwla, firstala.
He was first in the javelin throw.
Eeti, eriurudle, avanamari, kuridappama, eriya, yarmemudiyadhe.
There was not anyone who could spare like him to play the javelin.
Sathrundharathathu, sindhamal, avandepattayam, thirimbi, varad.
His sword will never come back without shedding the enemy's blood.
Appudipattai, eeti, avan, kaila, vachirundan.
Such a spear was in his hand.
Avan, sharpa, eriva.
He used to sharply flow it.
Unadaiyachivyathle, sathravani, sarayana, vudhathle, thakkukudiyavana, irukkavendam.
You should exactly, again, work against the enemies which you were working against you.
Sathravani, merkullam, unkaila, oru, eeti, epurudhum, irukkavendam.
You should always have the spear which is attacking the enemies.
Kathrudeyae, parishuttanamathuke, magima mudavada.
Glory to the holy name of the Lord.
22 vasanathle.
In the 22nd verse.
Ramaru, namakkukav, kaval, cheyivendam, endu, cholukkara.
We should say that you should have a watch over thing.
Nee, inda, markathle, vandapindu, nee, oru, kaval, karan.
After you come into this religion, you are a watchman.
Unadaiyukudumuthukke, nee, oru, kaval, karan.
You are a watchman to your family.
Adheepola, nee, sabayilum, nee, oru, kaval, karan.
You are a watchman to the church.
Manuputthanay, unai, esaravil, putturukkukke, naan, kaval, karanaga, eyerpaduthinane.
Oh, son of God, I have made you a god to the children of Israel.
Kaval, endu, devan kodutha, oru, uleyam.
Watchman or the god is the ministry which the Lord has given.
Adiyagamathhe, naa, parukumbadhu.
When we read in Genesis.
Andavu, angay, thottathle, kaval, kakkumudiyaga, manidhanai, vaitirundan.
The Lord had kept man to watch over the garden of God.
Adiyagam, 2, 15, parukumbadhu.
Genesis 2:15, when we read.
Ah, andha, thottathke, kakkum, avanai, adi, panbaduthum, devan, avanai, kondu, vendu, vaittar.
The Lord had kept him that he might dress the garden and keep it.
Oru devanudepilla, epurudhum, oru, epurudhum, oru, carefula, irukkavendiyadu, oru, kaalam.
A child of God should be very careful these days.
Pagaloo, yerevo, nee, oru, kaval, karan.
May be day or night, you are a watchman.
Ilavudhal, nee, oru, jaamakaran, nee, purindukalavendam.
Or else you should think that you are watching over the night.
Epurudhu, pagalunna, nee, vilipaa, irukkavendam, yerevilum, nee, vilipaa, irukkavendam.
You should be awake both in the day and at the night.
Nee, unre, kaval, karanaga, vaitirukkaya.
Are you keeping yourself as a god?
Neekka, kaval, chunnad, orusalar, thungiruva.
Some of them, when we keep for God, they will sleep in the night.
Oru, vilipinavi, namakkun, indanakal, avasyam.
We need the spirit of waking within us.
Endrui, unadaiyavaliyekathukoluvade, matthundu, unadaiyavayekathukoluvade.
One thing is to preserve your ways and nextly, to preserve your mouth.
Palakariyangal, kathukkulavendam, endu, vedathle, choliyirukkathade.
You have many things to preserve in the word of God.
Naagum, 2 vasanathle, mudalamvasanathle, parukumbadhu.
In our home, chapter 2, verse 1.
Unvaliyekaval, pannai.
You preserve your ways.
Unadaiyavali, sarayaa, irunda, kathrathala, vendukundeyirupar.
If your way is right, the Lord will keep on coming with you.
Unadaiyavali, unadaiyavali, irukkudada, devanudeyavali, agarukkavendam.
Your way should not be your way but the way of the Lord.
Andavu, yesayaavale, chollumbadhu.
When the Lord speaks in Isaiah.
Unadaiyavali, envalygal, alla, endu, cholukkara.
Your ways are not mine.
Adu, palayarpattu, varthai.
That is an Old Testament word.
Puriyarpatle, ennudiyavali, nee, irukkara, endu, unai, parthu, kathr, cholla, vendam.
In the New Testament, the Lord should say that you are in my ways.
Unadaiyavaliyani, kaval, cheyivendam.
You should watch over your ways.
Ah, vedathle, choliyirukkathade.
The word of God says.
Oru, vali, undu, adu, periyapada, adu, royal, pathin, Englishle, choliyirukkara.
There is a path which is royal.
Ah, oru, oru, baashi, adu, highway, choliyirukkathade.
And another tongue, it is said as highway.
Yesaya, 35 vasanathle, 8 vasanathle, parukumbadhu.
Isaiah 35:8.
Ange, perumbadai, endu, Tamille, choliyirukkathade.
We see that it's a great path in Tamil.
Englishle, highway, choliyirukkara.
In English, it is a highway.
Telugle, raja, badai, endu, choliyirukkara.
In Telugu, it's a king's highway.
Ah, andha, pathinudiyame, enna, thirima?
What is the greatness of this path?
Ange, perumbadayanavali, mirukkum, adu, parishuttavali, endu, ennapadum, thirtu, ulavan, adhile, nandundvaruvade, illai.
And highway shall be there on the way and it shall be called the way of holiness, the unclean shall not pass over it.
Indha valyil, orutthan, vendinravitaal, avan, pederay, irundhalam, chesigutupohamal, sarayana, yelakke, avanai, kondu, vayisairpar.
If one should come and stand in this way, although he is a fool, he shall not earn the win.
reward.
A spiritual man of God should always preserve his ways.
His path should be right.
His life of faith, his path of holiness should always should be be right.
Psalm hundred forty one verse three.
You should preserve your mouth.
You should preserve, you should keep it door for your mouth.
If one is being destroyed, his mouth is not proper.
If one family is shaking, then his mouth is not proper.
If a business is being falling, then his mouth is not proper.
Is it right?
Is the word of God saying like this?
We just think and see.
Ecclesiastes chapter five.
Verse six.
You do not give room for your flesh to go into sin by your mouth.
Do not say that it has come out of my foolishness before the angel.
Why should the Lord destroy your works of your hands being angered by your words?
If your business is being failing and if you are not able to stand by your family or being to establish your life, then all the reason is your mouth.
If you preserve your mouth, you can overcome everything.
Therefore he says, "Lord, you put a watch over my mouth."
Keep the door of my lips.
Even David was once always mumbling.
But he says, "I will never more speak, but I will remain dumb."
I will not speak even what is good.
Even Job was once telling about these things.
When the Lord began to speak, he says that I will close my mouth.
At the time he began to close his mouth, he began to receive double-fold blessings.
Thirdly, the Lord speaks about watch.
If you have to go to the place of the trumpet, you should do the work of the Lord.
You should have this spear always in your hands.
You should have this spirit, sort of this spirit in your hands.
Until the time of victory, you hold down to your hand.
Thirdly, you set a watch for your ways and also your mouth.
They should not be evil coming in your ways.
Fourthly.
They are waiting with their workmen in Jerusalem.
If you should hear the sound of the trumpet, you should lodge in Jerusalem, not anywhere else.
I went to a police camp near Kamodi.
There's a place called Kotei.
There an AR police was kept there.
And they had twenty-four hours of duty.
And they were in an emergency parade.
Their quarters is all there.
They will come in the morning.
But any time, they should be on uniform.
They can go close by to the market.
If they receive a message of any emotion anywhere.
He will trumpet two places.
He will trumpet in the midst of the quarters.
If you go, if you see in the police lines, there will be a parrot which is being trumpeted every day.
If they should go on an emergency, immediately there will be a trumpet sounded, then they will all come into their line immediately.
They will blow it in the bazaar in the same way.
Had they gone to any job to the bazaar, even that sound is being trumpeted there, immediately they will come and join the sound.
The trumpet will be sound in the skies, also there will be a trumpet in the church, and the Lord will transform you.
If you should hear this sound, you should lodge in Jerusalem.
Only to the one who is lodging in Jerusalem will hear the sound.
Jerusalem shows the church.
Jerusalem shows peace.
We can understand that it is the city of God.
It is the presence of the Lord.
It shows the life of Jesus.
Jesus said, "Tarry in Jerusalem."
Until the promise of the Father is fulfilled, you will tarry in Jerusalem.
If you tarry in Jerusalem, you can receive the Holy Spirit, also you can hear the trumpet sound.
You should be in the church, nextly you should live a life of peace.
If not, you will not hear the sound.
If you go to the next part without hearing the sound, this sound is not at fault, you are at fault.
She may also defy David.
After that, he came and asked for pardon.
He was given pardon.
His son had placed a condition for him.
You should not go to Jerusalem on the day you go out, you will die.
He held on for one or two years and then he forgot it.
One of his servants went out of Jerusalem, did not come and run away.
Searching for him, she may went out of Jerusalem.
What happened?
He was called and killed that day.
You have read from the word of God about the one who went from Jerusalem to Jericho.
He was caught among the thieves.
Like this.
If you should hear the trumpet sound, you should be in Jerusalem.
If you cannot be in the church, you cannot hear the trumpet sound, therefore we insist on you to remain on the church.
Not to say that we are exalting or speaking much of our church.
You be in Jerusalem, only then you will hear the trumpet sound.
Will all the place become Jerusalem?
Will Jericho become Jerusalem?
Just think and see.
Will Capernaum become Jerusalem?
Only Jerusalem can become Jerusalem.
Therefore, if we be in the church alone, we can hear the trumpet sound.
That is why we insist on the fellowship of the church.
What does John say?
Our fellowship is with the Father and with the Son Jesus Christ, you be united with us.
You see, when it is church means you do not have the angle that everything is the church, you just put away from your eyes.
Take away the truth of that wrong opinion from yourself.
Jerusalem is the church of God.
That Jerusalem is the Lord building.
That is turned as the bride of Christ.
Jerusalem is peace.
The Lord cannot take a person without peace to heaven.
You have no peace with husband or wife?
You have no peace with children or father or mother-in-law, father-in-law?
You have no unity with the believers?
You have no peace with the servants of God?
How can the Lord place such a man in heaven?
You calling with one another, you will, will you go to Jerusalem and the other go to hell?
One who is not in peace will never go at all.
You lodge in Jerusalem.
When things go contrary towards your peace, you should be able to hold on to your peace.
You have to lodge in Jerusalem.
At the times of confusion, you should not leave the church.
There were authorities in Jerusalem.
The people of the Lord were in Jerusalem.
You should have a willing heart to stay in Jerusalem.
In Nehemiah chapter eleven verse one.
The authorities of the people were in Jerusalem.
When we read in second verse.
The people who willingly offered dwell in Jerusalem.
You should have a willing heart to dwell in Jerusalem.
Only if you are an authority, you can be in Jerusalem.
The authority in the name of Jesus is given to you.
Nextly, when we see.
Nahemia five twenty-three.
We have not put out of garments.
We should not, those who are standing in walk fields should not put away their garments.
Those who are standing in their work hall should not put off their clothes.
This was standing for the Lord should not put away their clothes.
When the Lord is coming and knocking at the door.
What does the bride say?
I have just now put off my garments.
What terrible thing it brought to?
He went away.
Because he put off your garments, you are not able to come out and see him.
In Psalms of Solomon five three, we can read this.
When she came out, he is not found.
If you should meet the Lord Jesus, always you should put on your garment.
Jesus came seeking for the back sled and Peter to the sashishor.
That one disciple spotted out.
He said the Lord is standing on the shore.
When it was settled as the Lord, Peter jumped into the water.
What was the reason for it?
Because he had no garments on him, he jumped into the water.
He had no boldness to see Jesus because he had no garments on him.
In reading about a lad called Ma.
He was coming to see what was happening with Jesus.
He was only putting on a garment.
They pulled off his garment.
He ran away naked.
If you should know what is happening in your spiritual life, you should have these garments.
That your nakedness be not seen, one who is preserving his garments is blessed.
The Lord has given you the garment of praise.
Reading in the prophetical book of Isaiah.
Instead of your spirit of weariness.
In Isaiah sixty-one three.
He has given you the garment of praise instead of mourning.
Man has been sinned.
And before he could face failures.
What was the garment given to him?
The garment of the Lord, which is light.
He had put on garments, which is the light.
Psalm hundred forty-two, we see that the Lord is adorned with his light.
If you should preserve your garment means you should put on the light when the darkness will cover you.
You should not be always putting on weariness, but you should put on the garment of praise.
What is told in Revelation?
He who overcomes is given a garment of white.
A pure linen garment is given to the bride.
That is the righteousness of saints.
You are a child of God, you should never lose the righteousness for that sake.
You should never lose that righteousness.
Whether you go for work, you are a believer.
At business, you are a believer.
In your house, you are a believer.
You might be the head of your house or your children or your family, but you are a believer.
At business, you cannot say that you are an unbeliever.
You are everywhere as a believer.
If you should go and place this tree in California, it is called as mango tree.
It is not becoming a coconut in that place.
And the believer is changing from place to place.
It's not so.
Wherever you go, you are an anointed believer, you are a servant of God, you should not forget it.
You should not change your garment.
You should not leave the position of a prophet.
You should not leave the anointed garment.
Lastly, in twenty-third verse when we read.
He had armor for him.
He had washing for him.
Only such a person can receive, hear the sound of the trumpet.
For those who have, they are naked, they cannot hear the trumpet sound.
To those who are changing their clothes very often, they cannot hear the trumpet sound.
Nextly, he should always have the armor.
Firstly, I told you of an armor which is pure.
Secondly, so does a part to overcome the enemy.
You should have the part to overcome Satan.
When ever Satan comes.
Even at the time when you are asleep, the Lord should fill you with the anointing.
First Samuel chapter twenty-one.
What is the confession of David?
I have no armor in my hands, says him.
What does the word of God says?
He is a warrior.
Now what is his confession?
Do you not have a spear or a sword?
I have not brought my spear or sword.
You should not be without armor when you should attack the enemy.
When he comes with his armor, if you go without your armor, then it is best that you are not going for the battlefield.
There is a wily nature in the battle.
They will hinder the enemies that the armor will not reach them.
That is a great while in the battle.
They will see as to where this armor is coming from and hinder it.
How can one battle without any weapon?
There was a battle in the days of Saul.
First Samuel.
Chapter thirteen.
What did the enemy do?
He saw that nobody had any weapon in their hands.
On the day of the battle.
Except for Saul and his son, nobody, Saint Jonathan, nobody else had any sword or spear in their hands.
When in a big battlefield, only the king and the king's son is having their weapons and the soldiers does not have it, they are definitely going to face a failure.
Do you have the part as a Satan?
With the witchcraft and things like that, so saying, you should always resist in the name of Jesus.
One who is in the world, he who is in me is greater than in the world.
The power in you is the greater power.
With that, you can overcome.
You can overcome Satan.
You can overcome flesh.
You can overcome sickness.
You can overcome the world.
You can overcome situations.
The power in you is to overcome everything.
When one ship was going on a long, longer journey.
And the water to drink was emptyed.
They did not know what to do.
Now the ship was going through a particular area.
There was another ship going yonder.
They gave a signal to them.
And they asked what it was.
They asked for water because we have scarcity of it.
That the reply came.
You drink it from the sea.
He felt bad.
When we ask for water without humanitarian basis, he is asking us to drink from the sea.
Now they are asking the next ship, it's crossing.
He is also giving the same reply.
Two or three ships which were crossing, they asked the same question, they asked the same, gave the same reply to drink of the water of the sea.
Now the time passed down and therefore he started to take water out of the sea.
They came to a condition whether life or death, and therefore they take off the water from the sea.
What was the happen there?
It was a pure water drinking.
They did not understand anything.
Let's leave when geographically they saw it.
Two or three waters are coming and mixing into the sea.
The force of that water is not mingling with the sea water and is coming as a pure water.
Only then they could understand the truth.
Like this.
That the faith which is in you is able to quench the waters, for out of the one who wants it, thirst it, will flow of living waters.
The use, you need not go to anywhere, the power within you will make you overcome.
They had the weapon and also water.
A child of God should have the weapon and also the water.
Without a bread or a knife, David went to the presence of God.
That day, a weapon was given to him.
The high priest asked David.
We have no other weapon.
But we have the sword of Goliath whom you killed at Elah, and shall we give it to you?
And the priest said that we have put it up with a sari behind it, can we give it to you?
Many of you, the gifts and talents which the Lord has given you, you have put away with a piece of cloth.
Today, you are stammering without being able to resist the devil.
Today, as David received that weapon in his hand, you take that weapon to this date in your hand.
Our weapons should not be carnal.
Some of them will say that my mouth do not speak my hands.
Your hands should not speak and neither your mouth.
If both will speak, you will not go to heaven.
What does the word of God say?
Second Corinthians ten four.
For our weapons are warfare, not carnal, but mighty through God pulling down of the strongholds.
Lastly, he had water.
That is in life for a man.
Even in the journey of Israel, there was no water, but the Lord quenched their thirst.
If we had no water, we will be failing.
What does it show?
It shows faith.
Out of the ones who believes flows waters of living waters, and without water he will die.
Second Chronicles chapter three.
There was no water for the warriors, neither for the beasts of the world.
Then what is the confession of the king?
The Lord has given us into the hands of the enemies.
When you have no faith, you will fall into the hands of the devil.
When you are lacking in faith, you walk along into the clutches of devil.
You develop your faith.
Today, ban is changing the salt water of the sea into good water.
You should change the situations which are not contrary on your affair.
Numbers twenty-one verses five and six.
That the children of Israel did not have water to drink.
But the Lord did not lead them like that.
They heard they said there is no bread neither water.
But the Lord gave them water.
We need water.
After coming into this religion without faith to please God is impossible.
Wherever the trumpet of God is sounding, you come and gather there.
Have you done the work of the Lord?
Is there spear in your hand?
Are you watching the Lord's work?
Are you watching over the ways or your mouth?
The sound will, the trumpet of sound will be in Jerusalem, are you in Jerusalem?
Have you put out your garments or have you changed your garments?
Do you have weapons?
Do you have the strength to overcome enemy?
When it is a Satan comes, you resist him in the name of Jesus, he will flee.
Do you have faith in you?
Dear beloved, how many of us are deciding to hear the last trumpet?
All those who decide to hear the last trumpet, close your eyes.
Last trumpet is heard in your life only once.
You have heard the gospel of trumpet many times.
The trumpet of doctrine is heard every week.
But there is a last trumpet.
And so only once.
It's resounded once alone.
In what our situation, one is prepared, they only can hear it.
May it be in the morn or in the night.
May it be at the midnight or in the noon.
At the cock-rowing.
But see, what good was this?
In the night, in the morning, in the evening, in the day.
The conditions differ from place to place and from continent to continent, and morning, evening, night or noon differs from place to place with that the Lord.
The trumpet will sound.
We shall all be transformed.
All those who say, "Lord, I decide to hear the last trumpet and see you," and just close your eyes and kneel down.
That is a battlefield.
It's a time when we are going to be transformed from this word.
If you do desire to hear the trumpet sound, you do something from the Lord.
You do the work concerning the sanctuary.
You build your life which is the tabernacle.
You hold down the spear and stand for the Lord.
Until the stars appear, you wait. Until the coming of the Lord, you hold down to the spear and stand Until the coming of the Lord, we hold down to the word of God and stand You hold down to the spear You hold on to the word of God and shine his light You watch your way You watch your mark You start by in Jerusalem Do not go even for an inch from the fellowship of the church The sound of the trump will not be heard Somebody will say that everything is charged and everybody are people If you lodge in Jerusalem in the night, you will hear the trumpet sound According to situations, don't change your garments Do not lose the turn that you are the child of God May it be at highness May it be at loss or hunger, do not lose your garment Always putting on your garments, you overcome the rest of the Satan You put, you hold on to the faith Let the living waters flow out from you All those who decide to hear the last trump, lift your hands But for you to hear is very easy, but to practice it is very hard But still, the Lord is able to satisfy our longing Lord, I am hearing to this truth, is it true? If it is true, give me an anointing, Lord I want to hear the trumpet sound You who made me to hear the trumpet sound of those doctrines You who made me to hear the trumpet of doctrines Make me to hear the last trump also Andha ekala satthavaanathile kettkumaludhu, naanu vaanathile umodu vandukooda vendum And when the last trump is heard, I also should be gathered in disguise When thousands and thousands of saints are gathered hearing the trumpets, and I should come and gather to you I have heard the life of hearing the trumpet sound I yield my life to that trumpet sound When you yield yourself, the power of the Lord will come upon you The life of that word will come like an anointing upon you Jesus preached the truth And the life of that truth is the Holy Spirit Therefore, when the spirit of God comes into you, he will lead you into all truth The Holy Spirit is waiting that you might walk in the trumpet sound with this truth These experiences of seven experiences, the Holy Spirit is waiting to lead you to it All, if you close your eyes All kneel down Lord, giving an anointing to hear the trumpet sound The one who is preparing you is God The spirit of God is making you to hear the trumpet sound I need that anointing, Lord The Holy Spirit descend upon me that I may actually hear the trumpet sound When you wait, the spirit of the Lord will come upon you The spirit of God will come upon you The life of this world will come and satisfy upon you That which is forming in you will be holy The trumpet shall sound The last trumpet shall sound We shall all be transformed Kadaisi akala te kuri thi nan kailvi pottain Indha waalkai kuri thi nan arindu vandain Idalay innam evlavo anubhavuthu kana varaya Villay enbare purindu vandain andisolideru, otthukullu kuralitha nebed Apriyanal, andha anubhav enakku vendu vandu kettkuru, lethanabed Shida bala kathida baniya Ne kai vaitumaludhe, parleho unne kandhe, adukuriyekiruvay unakul anupugirada Ame, andha wallame unakul varumbaludhe, un waalkai matugirada Haleluia, haleluia Indha vasanathin badiuilla waalkai, katthari aavyanav unakut thara, unne niraapugirar Haleluia, deva wallame unne aalayasayigirada Hallelujah Enudhey vali, devundey parisutavali, enre ennapadum andisolideru Inesilamil, sanguvair andre tirmaniyengay In chivethi maathikulla matte, andha katthar kaha niipen andisolideru Hallelujah